I'd like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for December 10, 2024. First item on the agenda is remote attendance, and I'm assuming you're still not thinking anybody's going to be attending remotely. So the next item would be to accept our agenda, and please note that there has been the suggestion of moving the -- I think our whole business is actually up to immediately after public comment. So is there a motion to go to the agenda with that change?
Some.
Second.
That's moved in second. Is there any discussion on the point? Let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that carries unanimously with the four commissioners currently present. So that then moves us to Roman numeral three, public comment. Is there anyone from the public mission to address the board today? See no indication of that, and I note there are no staff introductions expected tonight, so that will move us then to old business item, Roman numeral seven, A, which we have moved up after public comment, and Aaron Gold is here.
This is all you. It's all you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Aaron Gold, independent municipal advisor from Spear Financial. Tim and Laura have invited me out this evening to present the results of the sale of the district's general obligation, limited tax park bond series 2024. We held a competitive sale last Thursday. We received four bids. The low bid was a 3.69% net interest cost bid from Time Bank, Parkerage, Illinois. The second place bid was a 3.76% bid from First Secure Bank in Sugar Grove, Illinois. These bonds, I'll often refer to them as the district's annual rollover bonds, are issued general obligation limited tax. So general obligation means that the bonds are paid for by a direct property tax levy, but that they're limited or constrained. The first limit is how much you can have outstanding in total, and then the second limit is how much you can levy each year to repay the principal and interest due on the annual rollover bonds. So when the board is doing this annual rollover bond process, what you're really doing is just filling your levying capacity for the upcoming '24 levy cycle to fund your annual capital needs. The structure of this issue specifically is we anticipate closing in two weeks on December 19th. It is a one-year issue with final maturity on December 15th of 2025, and with the final bid, the issue size was increased by $5,145 to $968,720 to fully utilize the district's 24 debt service extension base or bond and interest levy capacity. Framing this process relative to last year's annual rollover, this bid is down 70 basis points from last year. Over the same time period, we saw the one-year treasury rate decline by 82 basis points, and in total, the net annual proceeds generated through the rollover process increased by $36,795, or 4% over the district's prior year rollover bond issue. Therefore, recommend that the district's general obligation limited tax park bond series 2024 be awarded to Time Bank, Parkerage, Illinois, revised price of $968,720 and a net interest cost of 3.69%. Thank you for moving me to the top of the agenda. It's always a pleasure seeing the board and staff. If you have any questions as you go throughout the year, please feel free to reach out. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for her? Do we have a question?
I move to award the low bid on bonds to Time Bank with an interest rate 3.69%.
That's moved in second. Is there any further discussion on the point or any questions? Right now, let's do a roll call, starting with Sandra.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners reporting in the affirmative. And we have a motion then to adopt our annual bond ordinance.
I move to adopt bond ordinance 2024-09, authorizing the issuance of $968,720 in general obligation limited tax park bond series 2024 of the Urbana Park District.
Second. That's moved in second, and is there any further discussion or questions on that one? Right now, let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that again carries unanimously with all five commissioners reporting in the affirmative. Thank you again, Aaron, for coming always.
Absolutely. It's a brief day, but I do enjoy it. Everyone have a happy holidays and don't be a stranger.
See you at conference.
Yes.
Here's the Roman numeral four, the Urbana Park District advisory committee report.
Two months, October and November, these reports are included in this package.
Comments or questions? All righty, let's move on to our consent agenda for the evening. On tonight's consent agenda, our approval of the minutes of the November 5th study session meeting, approval of the minutes of the November 12 regular board meeting, and then approval of the minutes of three executive sessions, one October 8, one on November 5, and one on November 12. Item C includes two sets of minutes on the same line. Receipt of our monthly departmental reports, administration, planning and operations, and the recreation, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and lastly, action to accept the throw-in to the report and give assistance with gratitude. Under our rules, it's the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there any commissioner wishing to?
So I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second. That's moved in second, and under our consent agenda rules, there would be no further discussion at this point. So hold on, a roll call, starting with you.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously, all five commissioners. That moves us on into Roman numeral six, reports, financial reports.
Hello. Okay, we will jump right in with our revenues and expenditures report. This is a prior 12-month period, also showing the budget for the current period and preliminary unannounced results. This is for the past seven months, ending on November 30, 2024. Page one of this report is labeled as someone. This is all of our funds, excluding our capital improvements fund. Revenues reflected here, $11,763,873. This is an increase of $1,380,000 over the last month. This is right on par with the same time last year, and noting that this increase is a direct relation to the incoming transfers that we do annually from the recreation and museum funds over to the general fund in lieu of preparing to make our annual bond payments in December. Also in the revenues to note, just a quick update on our property tax distribution. We do still have one outstanding, and I did reach out to Cassandra Johnson's office, and I was told that we are waiting for our vendor to review and send distributions back to us, and that there are five counties ahead of us so far. So it sounds like they're a little bit behind, and that it would be at least a week or so for the -- before we receive our final distribution.
Could you clarify, Roman, with the vendor?
They must third-party source some element of their distributions. So, yeah. But it should be coming, and definitely it sounds like by at least the end of this calendar here, we'll have our last distribution. Moving on, our total expenditures listed here is $7,767,374, and that gives us a surplus after seven months. This is in excess of revenues over expenditures of $4,196,900. Page two is our capital improvement fund standalone. Here, total revenues, $3,544,719, and total expenditures, $6,343,999. This is the deficit. Expenditures exceed revenues of $2,489,620. Page three, this is all funds district-wide, and here we are just noting that our total ending fund balance of all funds aggregate is $11,814,042. So the remaining reports here are individual fund reports for our three main working funds, the general fund, recreation fund, and museum fund, and the last page is our UIAC group fund. Any other questions on revenues and expenditures? Moving on to our treasures report. This is a report of the amount of cash the district has on a single day, November 30 of 2024, listing our 25 funds down the left, and where cash is invested is displayed across the top, and investments totaling this date, $14,131,134. Page two, the top section, lists the amounts that we have listed in interest-bearing accounts. So of that $14,131,000, we do have $11,201,842.99 out in investments at varying rates.
Yeah, could you let us know why it is that we have over $12,006 million at 0.02% interest? Can that clarify savings, is that?
Well, that the majority of all our tax monies, and that's our liquid account, if we're in CDs, we don't have access to them quite as quickly, frequently, and with the large projects we have going on, having it.
Well, I understand the liquidity. I'm just curious, doesn't the park pool money market offer the same, roughly the same liquidity?
I can absolutely double check into that. Absolutely. I don't know that off the top of my head what their liquidity is in their money market one.
Well, I mean, I just, you know, we're selling bonds at 3.69%.
You're sure?
At added, that would be 0.02%.
Absolutely.
It hurts my eyes.
Yep. Yep, I can definitely find out what the park pool one is doing and circle background with everybody on that, see if we can get something at a higher interest rate in a quicker fashion. Absolutely. Any other questions on that? Okay. The bottom part of this report is where our interfund loans are. We did have a little bit more activity for the indoor pool, another $75,000. This is from recreation to UIAC. Again, this is really covering that very large, you'll see in the expenditures report, revenue expenditures report, of all the work that we've been doing at that location, given up to snuff. The school has been billed for another $164,000, so we should be saving that money here very quickly as well from that school. And then we have the last page. Page three is the distributions list for the month of November. This lists vendor payments. This will match what was in our accounts payable reporting in the consent agenda. Total dispersals, excuse me, total dispersments of funds. This includes all payroll. This was a three-payroll month, and all vendor payments, and the total for distributions, And I present the treasure report for audit.
Capital, capital spend, I think, is down.
Yep.
Where is that going to hold?
I think we're just approaching the end of the health and wellness billing, and I'm not sure if we've gotten number 20 yet, but I know we didn't have.
I think we just got number 20 this week.
Okay.
That'll probably get paid, that will get paid this month.
Gotcha. Any more big numbers? Is 20 the end, or?
No, there's still.
Oh, no. Dare to dream.
But we don't know how many there will be, is that?
Right, is that the case? We don't know how many?
I don't know specific. I know there's more on the contract. I don't know specifically like how it's going to invoice out in the future.
Is it, isn't it under two, is it under two million? I think it's under a million remains.
I think it's under a million now. I'll clap my head, I think it was around $600,000, better.
Okay. So we made it. So close. So close. I present the treasure report for audit. I present the treasure report for audit.
Second. She was the first.
I was just louder.
Yeah, it was the first second. Any discussion on the point? Right now, let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners.
All right, and we will move on to our capital budgets reports. And page one of this report, 2019A, ARS, as we just discussed, slow activity out of this account this month. We did expense $11,897 to Core Number 19, and this was using our DCEO grant money. And then using our donations and contributions, we did expense $83,521 to Midwest Commercial Fitness. This was for fitness equipment, second bill. $465 to MAT for testing number 15, and $247,132 paying another portion of the Core Number 19 bill. And then using our Gemma Fund transfers, we had a few items listed here, $13,958 for the auto scrubber, $1,280 again to the MCF number two, and $1,494 miscellaneous items. I don't remember what they were. I think one of them was like a microwave and just various odds and ends type of stuff for that $1494. Number, capital budget 2024, I think we did receive recognizing $1,100 received towards tributes and donations, and under expenditures, construction crew projects, $2,622 for various supplies. And then at the very bottom, urinary equipment, $8,372 is expensed to Aaron's Hogan Walker for a rotary room. 2023 expenditures under hardscapes and fencing, $50,000 paid to Mid Illinois Number Seven, construction on the Prairie Play project, and as well as $44,941 paid from a different bucket. This one's bonds, but from the same bill to Mid Illinois Number Seven. 2022, under expenditures, again, working on a metalwork playground project, using monies from the foundation, the second half of the bill, $16,000 towards the sculpture benches that are in around Prairie Play. Then using our Oglad brand, we had several expenditures here, $103,731 to Mid Illinois. This is paying across two invoices, number six and number seven. We also spent $1,661 to Upland, number six, for design work, and $1,105 to New Choice for signs. Then number, or excuse me, year 2021 and 2020, neither had any new activity during the month of November. In the last page of our capital reports, number 2019, we had, again, all Prairie Play type of items, used up the last of our contingency of $104,991. That was spread across $90,914 to Mid Illinois Number Six and Seven, $12,754 to Upland Number Six, and $1,323 for various signs, mulch and sand, various items there. Send it down to the end of the table with Derek and Andy for some capital projects updates.
I got some pictures on a couple of our main projects that are wrapping up. For Health and Wellness Center, I think last meeting, we had talked about the signage going in, that's more of the required identification signage for the rooms. And the last week, the signage group is back, and this is more of the directional signage, wayfinding attached on the walls and hanging from the ceiling. And then this is our community images. This is on the second floor waiting area towards the fitness equipment rooms, and so we had selected some different community images to be part of our signage package there, and they came out really well. I think we've got basketball, soccer, turkey trot, and a couple playdays in the parks. And then this is, I think this week, these signs here, so this is the kind of main sign behind the registration desk, and then more of the wayfinding signage as well. This is from the lobby, just directing people to gym and what's upstairs and down the hall. So there's still some more signage work to be done, but that's one of the main things kind of left on the building that's getting wrapped up this month. Here's a couple more signs. This is for the Binkie's piece in the reception area, and then a thanks for the donor, and then for Langston's mural, so they have their name of their piece, and then their statements as well, and then the thanks for donations for that one there, too. And here is our track with two full lanes. So now you can see, this is one of the tighter areas that we had on the track between the interior beam and the exterior drywalled beams there. So now we have completely repainted lines. The only thing that's remaining for track work is we're going to have some padding installed on the interior beams here, and that is scheduled for the week of December 20th. One of the final items that was remaining for occupancy permit as well was, if you recall, is raising the railing. So this is, you can't really even tell anything has been done. I think it was raised probably an inch, inch and a half total, if I had to guess, but that now meets the requirements for the permit for occupancy.
Was it better?
Yeah, I think it does look better. It gives it finished look.
It has a better feel to it.
And I think Laura had mentioned the benches at Prairie Play, so that's kind of the big thing there over the course of the last few weeks. So this one is at the main entrance. You can see the parking lot, the main entrance to the playground itself is just to the right of the image. This one is by the zip line.
The flowers are like a talk tube.
Yes, yeah. So this one is in between the swings and the spinner and the main five to 12 zone, so you can kind of have a better look at the talk tubes here on these flowers. They came out really well, like the colors actually, they kind of change as the day goes and depending on how the sun's hitting them. Keith installed them, and he was telling me that at some parts of the day, the sun was going through it and it was reflecting light out on the ground. That looked pretty neat, which kind of reminds me of the kaleidoscope at Health and Wellness too, which is those happy little accidents that I think worked out well for us. And then this one is on the path from the pavilion towards the two to five zone in the zip line area. I think the colors came out super vibrant. It looks really good out there if you haven't been out there yet. And then kind of we're just wrapping up basically the project. We've got final punch list items going in. So that was the high-low water fountain with bottle filler. That was installed last week at the pavilion. There's just a few small things remaining. One of those is actually highlighted in this picture to remove some signs that were put on our tickets from the installation contractor. But we are basically getting to the point where we're going to wrap up our final change order, get final billing, and start moving into processing payment, and start working towards closeout for our grant here in the coming month or two. And I think so last meeting or two, I've talked about a couple projects that we have going up to bid this winter, probably in the next month. And so one of those is the KRT Pavilion, and the other one is with South Ridge and the improvements to the trail there. But I kind of want to just bring another project to our attention again, because we'll probably start seeing this more in our board capital updates in the coming months, and it's the B.C. Woods Bridge from the Nature Center to B.C. Woods. So if you recall, we did a bridge evaluation throughout the whole district. This one was the one that was recommended for replacement in the next five years. We've been working with ERA, and they've done some preliminary review on the structure, got some heights where we're sitting with that bridge compared to the adjacent road bridge. The road bridge is 18 inches below where our bridge is currently sitting, which is good in comparison to other recent bridge projects that we had in the park. So Keenan's reaching out to DCEO. We're trying to get a better idea of what our timeline is once we have the agreement in hand and paperwork completed for that funding, because that's going to start the clock basically on when we need to get the project moving and pay for it and get everything ready at the site. So our next step is to get some information from DCEO and then work with ERA and the drainage district, kind of give them our preliminary plans and how we're laying out what the bridge is currently, current situation of where everything sits, and then be able to move from there into to design work.
Is there a preferred concept now, or is still?
So I think before, when we talked about it months ago, we had originally talked with Jake about four options where we could repair it or replace part of it or replace the whole thing. With the DCEO grant, it's to actually replace the whole bridge, so we're moving just in that scenario where we're going to just remove this bridge entirely and replace it in the same location, more or less.
By making it technically accessible in the process.
Wider.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Something wider and lower down as part of that?
Probably the same elevation, just because the drainage concerns, but we'll have a adequate ramp up, so it'll be totally easily accessible. Currently, the one that's there is pretty narrow, and if you're ever out there with a school group or a group of oddball bird watchers on a Sunday morning, it gets a little crowded, so.
Very difficult to herd from there, too, with the bridge going back.
That's our experience.
Now, would there be, would there be a way of accessing that area in B.C. Woods when that's under construction?
Our question is, how long do we think the replacement essentially will take and will be closed down?
Right. Good question.
Yeah, we don't.
Very good.
You can access from the other side.
Yes, you can.
But obviously not very easily.
Right.
You'd be very able-bodied.
Yeah, it's going to be a challenge, I think, with this project, is that kind of thing, but also the size of crane you need, and that's something we've been looking at too, and actually had a contractor go take a look at it with us, so they can kind of get their eyes on how difficult does a crane, the site, you've got big power lines overhead, you've got another bridge that it may have to station itself on, and weight limits on that kind of stuff. So it's, it's going to be a challenging one, for sure.
This is like what we did, you have to sit the bridge.
Yeah.
Which is an advantage, frankly, in terms of time.
The good news is this is downstream, so just comparing it to other bridge projects The good news is, this is downstream, so just comparing it to other bridge projects, this is downstream of the existing bridge, or our other one was upstream, or their concern was backing up before it hits that bridge. So this one, we're downstream, and this one, we're also above the existing bridgeway. We have had preliminary discussions with the Drainage District and haven't had any concerns raised at this point for this one.
We will file a pick more than that.
Preparables. Just some comparables, of course, we did the, I wasn't here for the original bridge, but we did the horn walk, we were closed for a reasonable long period to get that work done. Prior to the horn walks, I think the first year I worked here, due to the spring rains, that near the woods were closed until August because of the flooding and the damage that we got. So we have had interruptions in periods, obviously, hopefully this all may get better and easier, but I think we've gotten the most value out of that old bridge, and certainly coming up with a new structure would be the right thing to do and give us all an easy brain in for, you know, the next 80 years or so.
And you're talking about bringing a crane in to install it, does that mean not replacing with another suspension bridge, that this would be a?
Correct.
A trestle to the bridge.
It is, and the experience, you know, I think the suspension bridge is, you know, it's bouncy and it's an idea, you know, I think if you try to cross, it's disorienting and a little challenging if there's a glass or whatnot, so. If it's something firmer, it's steady.
Yeah, it'd be great on a playground.
The kids love it.
Yeah, let me tell you, leading a school group in the Bucy Woods on that bridge can be quite exciting, especially if you have a bunch of fifth grade boys.
An easy way to teach harmonics.
Well, it's true, they'd never get it right.
This is, to remind you, all this is money the Cape Door State Centers initially benefited and then brought to you, so our thanks to them.
Just keeping track, that would be three new bridges, so remember, we have a legacy of bridges to replace, so each one we get to is putting us into the green zone, I would say.
How old is that one?
I think it's the oldest.
Approximately?
Michael, do you know the history? It was way here before, and then I believe they modified it and upgraded it.
I think it went, the original, I need a purpose.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
And I think Frau Hopper was involved in doing some rework on it.
Yeah, yeah. What a district.
It was that late? I'm, 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 my memory of 1983 is about that great, but I thought that bridge was in there.
It was, we moved to number six, and then Old Nature Center was in place in the bridge, so that had to be.
Were we renovated?
Long history.
Oh, that brings us to the executive directors report.
Let's see, just a few updates, hopefully you saw the You Belong Here report, KRT updates, just really exciting things that seem to pull together, we have some new challenges on how we're going to bid, and we're working on that. I think one of the more exciting things is we've had some good connections with the rail companies through a connection at CSX, which has helped get us talking with Norfolk Southern, and hopefully will resolve our Union Pacific issue through help getting people to respond back to us, so we're very excited about that. It's a very big project, we've got huge operations in Vermillion County, huge operations in Champagne County, and it's going to be a major development for the Urbana Park District, so I know I've never worked at a scale like this, and it's certainly a large expensive project, but everyone's working really well together, I think we've got, you know, all the teams cooperating, and then probably getting some new challenges, working with one grant to be spread over three districts, how do we logistically work through some of those challenges? It's easy for me to say, well, we'll just work together and go get this and go get that, but how do we legally and orderly and grant fashion, you know, transfer those?
Especially when the cost overruns kick in, because the cost estimates were made a long time.
Much higher, exactly. So we'll have that facing us, but anything else, anything I left out significant from our meeting on the KRT?
No, I mean, to Michael's point, you know, we're trying to identify how we can do this, we're here with Matt Dearing, so we think that existing M O U offers some, you know, interest to that, but we want to make sure we're doing it correctly, so. And the bid's rapidly approaching, so we're rushing to be quick there, yeah.
We don't want to jinx it, but we're likely getting signals that lease, there may be a lease to purchase, could actually work through with Norfolk Southern, so that's kind of the big concern, if you can't get that connection in place, that, you know, will be challenging. And then again, I think, I think we've heard this before, but we, again, through different reasons, looked at the Smith Road intersection, that's going to be challenging, we found some, you know, the way the homes are arranged there, it'll be interesting, we don't need that, but, you know, in the future, that's something that needs to be looked at, and then, you know, any additional right-of-way boundary issues certainly have to be dealt with, that's probably up and down the corridor in both counties, you know, different areas, but things are progressing, the team's working hard, we're on schedule, so we're very happy.
One very significant encouragement, but it sounds like Norfolk Southern's already heard it, to address that.
Probably takes the lead on that, on that, because it is their property now, so we'll keep recording, and I guess we all know how that goes. Just wanted to update the board, leadership team has all staff group meetings starting in January, we go to each small work group and sit down, and we have a series of questions, and the goal is to find out how staff's doing, identify any challenges, talk about any changes, we address wage and benefits and things like that, so it gives us a chance to have a little more dialogue, a little more one-on-one with each work group, so we started doing that a few years ago, and I think it's worked really well, and created a good dialogue, and whenever we have new people, it's a good way to kind of get people integrated to each team, so that's coming up in January. As you all know, the plans are pretty well set, we think for the conference or the new heights, just want to mention anyone, we have the Friday night staff board social, it would be a Corky's room, we'll get the room number out to everybody like we do once we get there and have all that, but it's time for everyone to come together, have dinner, and visit, and share about the conference, so it's really a good, good time, and we kind of like staying in, we've over the years gone out, and I think that idea of staying in is, it's pretty easy, makes it a little more social, you're not in the comble that are fighting calves, and, you know, just kind of that hustle-bustle, which can be exciting, but it's, it's pretty relaxing to be able to do that, so look forward to that. As you all know, the Health and Wellness facilities open now for business, seeing folks come in, a lot of donor tours, visitors, we have the City of Urbana over, the Urbana Police, I think they're interested in the facility as well as the rest of the city, so we may be looking at opportunities to offer our partners ways to access the facility. Corky, I think you had an update, too?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that our membership hours to come in and buy memberships have been kind of limited, but we started the Monday before Thanksgiving, and we have 143 members right now.
Wow.
Forty-one of those are OSF members, so when I say members, it's not a family, it's each individual in the family, right? So if you buy a family, that's three, so, but I've got 143 members.
Are we able to purchase those on Thursday during the holiday?
Yes, you will be able to.
I heard yes. Good for the staff, I agree with that. They said, how do we do that? Let's make that happen. If you're right there, take care of the business, and you're all set.
Just want to get a quick update, we're starting to get business.
It's encouraging, great.
And everyone who's come in has been overwhelmed, they're like, wow, so.
You did a great job after the senior sergeant meeting in introducing us to the facility.
Thank you.
And I just got to say, you know, the mayor's posted on Facebook pictures from Florida that she got. She's a fine photographer, but you just can't capture what that thing looks like.
Right, right, it's exciting. Let's see, another update, we, today Corky, Roger and I were able to attend the Urbana Park District Senior Club, their annual Christmas dinner at the Philip Schreick Center, it's very well done, and just talking about the senior club, it was organized before I came to the district, and so it's got to be closing in on, you know, 40, 40-plus years, so it's pretty amazing, I just want to bring it to our attention, keeping a club going is very difficult, things change, people change, interests change over the years, but they've always had a steady following, and they have a very active, organized group, their officers, you know, really take care of business, so it's, it's neat to see something that started a long time ago is still happening today, it's very vibrant, you know, over the years, getting, sitting with different people, hearing how important that event, how the club really, you know, improves their life, sit next to a woman and ask how she got involved, and she was moved here from California, didn't really know any, lots of people, knew a few people, but heard about the club, she showed up, said, I went to Philip's just to see what was going on, and met an amazing woman who was so welcoming, and just brought her right in and got her connected with the club, and I just love hearing that, those kind of stories are still happening today, so just want to give hats off to that club and their effort, and bringing people together and their mission. Answer any other questions? We have them.
I know they're well organized, because the first thing I was asked when I walked through the door was, had I paid my dues?
Tim, I looked it up, in aerial photography, it looks at a bridge between 73 and 88.
Oh, wow.
Between 73 and 88, and it's not apparent in historical photography, between prior 88 or, yeah, 73.
I remember when we built the Philip Center, well, when Thornburn had to be closed, one of the first groups stepped up and said, we want to be part of this, we want to have our room at, you know, because they were so used to their room at Thornburn, so it was their room, that they, they were very clear and very vocal and very organized about, we still want space at the new center, so, yeah, they're a pretty dynamic group.
Moving on to President's Report regarding upcoming meetings, it's noted here, no meeting in January for the board studies session, I would hope that we will at least keep that date open on our calendars in case we may, may need that. January 14 will be the regular board meeting, semi-annual review of past executive session minutes, which should go a lot faster given that we have to do every month. And we're hoping to actually accept our audit by then, right?
My fingers are crossed, I did actually get a draft Monday, so, yeah, I'm hardworking, I'm getting that buttoned up.
And I did not have anything else to add to all that. Liaison records, the finance study group did meet on November 22nd, and I think we've covered.
I think we've covered.
We've covered everything from that, and we are planning to meet again on the third January, yeah, third January. Anything to report from the policy study?
There is, we have not.
And Parks Foundation?
Well, I'll tell you, they gave you a much more complete report last week than I could possibly have seen, so.
Was there a, a Parks Foundation meeting yesterday?
No, no, this, that was their December meeting.
And the finance study group?
We'll be meeting again on 2025.
Okay, moving on to old business, we've already done item A, and there was no old business removed from the current agenda, so we're on to new business, action to approve ordinance 2024-10, tax abatement for our alternate revenue source bonds.
Yep, this is our, this is the second part of our annual process for the bonds, and this one's specific to our alternate revenue source bond, you know, we make this a payment from our existing revenue sources, I actually, I think, I think you really have to recite these words to meet the obligation, but anyway, this is an act, just, it's just part of the bond process, and it takes, it helps us get to our, the next steps for the levy, basically, that will come between January and April.
See, I need to read these minutes.
Well, yeah, I'm just not sure if there was certain language that you have to recite on here, present a closing order.
Yeah, so we're all here. And, I mean, this is, these are sort of sub-minutes, and I don't think we're formally holding a random meeting, it's just, this is certifying, and I, I think in order for us to certify all this stuff, we do need a motion referring specifically to ordinance 2024-10.
Okay, we, I move to approve ordinance 2024-10, evading the levy of property taxes on Urbana Park District, general obligation park bonds, alternate revenue source, series 2019A.
That's a motion seconded, any further discussion or questions on that point? Hearing that, let's go roll calls, starting with Andrew.
Aye.
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 Action to accept funding priority reports for the Urbana Parks Foundation.
I think you'll probably recall, this was the basis, the main topic for our discussion at our joint meeting with the foundation, I don't think staff intended to go over it again, unless the board would like to go item by item, I, I think staff is probably more interested if there's anything extra needed or changed, or any other thoughts. Last thing, I was just going to comment, here we put, report together is a little bit challenging, because there are things we clearly know that are super high priority, things on the bubble are percolating up, or may come through in some ways, so we hate to miss those things, things that happen annually that we want to capture and make sure that, you know, they're important, and then that last, you know, things, things change, grants come about, new opportunities, so we don't know those things yet, so we report on what we do know, but it is sort of flexible, as much as we're committed to this, we all know if something's needed to be changed, we have flexibility to change it, so I think, just want to make that statement, make sure that was.
I guess, I just have a question, and I've always, since I was sick last week.
Oh, yes.
On the public art, I guess, we have gift funds to support art, is this really a priority now with the funds that we have?
I think it is, because, one, we're always looking for special donors, we discussed this.
I can understand if it's of interest to donors, and that is why we're continuing, but we also have sufficient, fairly sufficient funds to support art.
Are you meaning the Brown Fund?
I am.
I mean, just speaking from staff, I think I speak for all of our leadership, you know, we try to practice working within the capital structures, the grant structures, the gift structures, and, you know, what, endowed funds, try not to think of, you know, going there first, try to get the public to respond, you know, and save our dollars for hard-working dollars.
Yeah, and specifically the Brown Fund, it mentions Meadowbrook Park, whereas.
But is it restricted to Meadow?
We've interpreted that way.
Okay, okay, I guess, just sort of thinking, Joseph.
They actually worded it such that ultimately that board could decide to do whatever they want.
Right, right.
But they made it clear in our preference that actually in the text, they mentioned Meadowbrook Park.
It's just that U.S. dollar ships continues to sit at 30,000K, right, in terms of, I haven't seen that number increase, and I know we've had conversations.
It has increased, though, we have different.
Yeah, the, the difference is that we've been able to have the Urbana.
Yeah, the differences that we've been able to have, the Urbana scholarships.
I recommend that from these folks. Right, this is coming from the foundation. And so just, we encourage us to have a conversation with them about that as well. I feel like it continues to sit at thirty K. Based on what we heard from C U S R last week in terms of needs, in terms of scholarship, we know this is a continuous underneed. I know it might not be the most, it doesn't appeal to all donors, but I just, yeah, that's my thought. I'm happy to accept this document, but just in terms of, can we invert the numbers perhaps? Would be my preference.
Just to include that, we have, or explain again, our variety of sources of, so that it's, you know, a better number.
Right now, and for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year, we'll have around twenty-five thousand dollars for Urbana scholarships. So that's primarily when we go out to events with Urbana or any kind of outreach event. That's where we take care of families and individuals right there at the program. Also, we have thirty thousand dollars for health and wellness memberships for the next five years. So.
Own tax dollars? How do they come into play? We used to average and budget about.
Own tax dollars come into play with what Meredith is mentioning right now.
Right.
Everything else is a donation. Whatever we don't raise through registration where somebody will donate or what we don't raise from the foundation solely goes into tax support provided.
I guess also, are these numbers realistic for the foundation? Have they historically given us raised thirty thousand dollars? I don't know.
And we kind of struggle with, you know, we're open to recommendations on the amount. I think what I understand staff's doing is we're trying to see what the public will respond on providing donations, primarily for our tax-supported, the money that we would put in for taxes. If somebody made a thirty thousand dollar donation, theoretically, we could add thirty more, add sixty, or we could redirect it to another capital, you know, or program project. So that's one of our goals, we find other funders to, to our tax values to go and work on, you know, core projects. I think our staff's okay if we want to make it a hundred and twenty thousand. I'm, I'm certain we can do that. We can, everybody comes for free here. I mean, we, we struggle with the number and we have this conversation every year. I think we just, it would help if the board said it's sixty or thirty or twenty-five or ninety or, you know. Because we have multiple sources, we're trying to preserve our tax values so that tax money ideally wouldn't have to go to scholarship. I mean, it's philosophy. If somebody says, I don't have a problem with our tax dollars going to, I have no issue with that at all.
I mean, I always regarded it as perhaps mistakenly, but it's, it's kind of a wish list. Not a, you know, we want every one of these things to get funded in that particular year. It's to, you, you're a cognitive donor and you, you find out what their interest is, what's, what's their hook? And it helps to have some kind of price tag at every point, too.
I would, I think that's very well set. It's a kind of a loose guideline of what could be done and that we always know that the other topics, we, we, laboring because we struggle with this report. You know, it has meaning and it has good information, but it is a sort of a blasting of ideas together and hope something sticks. I don't mean negative about that, but it's a goal, it's an opportunity. It's a way first step, a dialogue between the park board and the foundation trustees. And without having each person cite what their most interest and how they would like to raise money toward it, we try to create a menu selection of more typical and topical areas that somebody might find themselves in. So again, it's a, it's a guideline. We'd be happy to revise it. If we didn't have it, I think it would make it harder.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I just, I guess I just, my, my point is I would rather see us asking the foundation to focus more on youth scholarships.
You'd like to see a bigger number.
I would like to see a bigger number there.
I would like to make that statement to them. I mean, not that they've been, not that they've been negligent or anything, but to make that statement to, to them. And if I remember right, I think it was last, was it last week at that, at that joint meeting that you talked about poverty?
Yes, sixty-two percent.
Yeah, and it, it seems to me like, I don't know how long it's been at thirty thousand, it's been a long time.
It's an inflation review.
That's exactly what happened.
Good point.
And I think we have to have support for the health and wellness facility. But what we don't see as much in here is art. Like, I think of all the summer camps, right, and all the other programming, right? So I think it's not an either or, it's a both and, right? So like now we have a facility, so our need should be even higher because we need to provide access to a facility that didn't exist before. And we still need to provide support at the same level or more to our regular programming. I think that's where, so I'm super excited that we have this additional support, the continued Urbana, which does support our regular programming. But I think, right, it has special ways in which we're using it now, so.
Well, and the other piece, I was just going to say that was talked about by the foundation is the Vincent Green Fund, which is scholarship fund, has grown to about seventy thousand, if I remember correctly from our meeting. So again, I think it comes into, the foundation coming to an understanding that when we request it, we're going to need it. So we need to keep putting money in, in there because we only request what, what we actually need. Need. So I think that understanding that we're going to start, eventually Urbana's going to run out. And so, you know, we're going to need those funds. So trying to start building that up is a good conversation to have with, with the foundation. And I think they're on that track. They talk quite a bit about it, but again, you know, making sure they understand the importance because we have been fortunate to have the Urbana scholarship. We're fortunate to have the Health and Wellness Scholarship for the next five years, but that, you know, no guarantees that's here forever. So that, that's fifty-five thousand dollars we're going to find somewhere.
We're talking point two is the O S F funds are to cover scholarships of health and wellness. So if you're interested in nature programs, you need another vehicle to make sure that all those interested families could access. And then the other point we talked about in the joint meeting was that we're able and willing to scholarship more than children in the various, you know, we've heard, my child wants to go, but I have to be able to go also to get them there. I can do, you know, that sort of thing. So making sure that we have funds now, but as Courtney said, they're depreciating funds each year. And so replenishing that, making it an annual statement.
By increasing, if we were to increase this amount, it wouldn't have to come to us now. It could be something that they're banking in the Vincent Green Fund or whatever because they have that ability to do that we don't, so.
And can we clarify, this also was something that came up through social media. So if a, a program is offered at health and wellness, let's say a course or class, you need a membership, you don't need a membership to access it, but you're still paying for the program.
Correct.
So health and wellness gives you access to the facility, but not access to the programs.
Correct.
So that's also.
Right, get you the door, but if you want to participate.
Now, I guess in my own mind, I have the ambiguity, well, an O S F, does it have to work for somebody to attend a specific program at the health and wellness?
We have the ability to do that for programs, but right now it was designed for.
Memberships.
Memberships. They didn't restrict us to where we couldn't allow people for programs.
Obviously, the goal would be to get this membership built up so that the programs go and that we can be cared for.
So Tim, the next step is to go back to the foundation in January. Something the board didn't want to see, provision to it and what it underscored that board thinks youth scholarship is important.
Is there a recommendation on an amount that we all takes a reasonable number?
Well, I would also, I would also like to say that like maybe, I don't know if necessarily like, like it should just be like scholarships.
I agree.
Right, because like specifically with the need of, of, um, special rack, right, that, that's another need. It's unfortunate that like the meetings were in the order that they were, because then it's like, we would advise to have this kind of extra information when talking to the foundation. But I don't know about.
I think we should amend it to be scholarships, as you talked about, so that it's clearer.
So not specifically youth, but just scholarships in general.
And I think it would be helpful to understand the challenges they face in terms of interacting with donors, in terms of, I mean, and I recognize donors have their own priorities and sometimes they have a very specific thing, right? And we have to be able to be flexible in that. But I think what would also be helpful is to know how much they have been successful at. Like in presenting this as a target, maybe supplement of what did we, what did the past year look like? Maybe that was presented last week, what the, what the foundation has, like, I don't know, are we getting a report?
Well, what I was going to say is that it's very clear that the foundation, like what is very clear is that the foundation is making big efforts in the soon to kind of look at all of those things. And they're planning and how they're, for their own strategic plan. So I think that providing this, I think that, that we're going to be hearing a lot more back from that soon about those. And like, you know, maybe that is something that we should make sure that they're aware of, for their own strategic planning. That like, we want feedback as well, more, maybe more so than just updates or the annual.
I just don't know if there was a summary of, to want to help the foundation provide, we gave you this much money. This is how important our work is, right? This is, we funded X amount in scholarships, we funded X amount to, you know, to the, or health and wellness. We all pretty much have a much sense of that, but I think it's important that we as the board kind of.
Get a historical perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
Or an annual or.
Yeah, like an.
Well, just to get a little perspective, last, at that meeting, our.
Again, I apologize if you talked about that.
We requested funds for, from the beginning of the fiscal year till December.
Right.
And we had asked for fifty-five hundred dollars in scholarship. So that was how much they paid us after the allocation. So roughly, and again, the actual scholarship program, there's not as many requests because everybody knows Urbana's there.
Right. And so I think that's also important, right? So maybe my number is wrong, maybe it doesn't need to be more than thirty K. But I feel like it's sat there at thirty K. I, I have a sense we have a need that's bigger than that, or maybe it's the future, right? So, but I also think from a view of the foundation.
If you think of it long-term, okay, twenty-five thousand goes away and five thousand there, boom, they get right at thirty again.
Yeah.
And, and it could easily imagine needing to go higher.
But I also think it's important for us to understand how much they have given, right? The transaction, the transfer of funds and what they have supplied.
You know, they covered the annual transfer, you know, for, you know, to separate distribution, but we can get more of an annual report so we can be fair and honest with them. I do, I think I'm right in this. You know, currently we're collecting far below that thirty thousand in donations. Essentially, we've got turkey trotting bucket, we've got the appeal letter, we've got overages for registrations. So, I mean, we're trying to be kind, those are pennies compared to going out and getting thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars earmarked for scholarships each, each year. So I think that's why we went with a coasting number for each year because we know we're far below that. And suddenly you could say, hey, it's sixty now. I mean, it can be, but I'm not sure there's a vehicle to drive it any further than it is right now. And I'm hoping, what you're saying is true, too, that we'll see some internalization, a recommitment to what our next steps are and kick back in and start fundraising at a high level. Can't guarantee, but, you know, again, part of this is menu. So, hey, if we do better over here, it's okay, you know, it's all good, and so.
I think partly it's like this, this like presentation of where it's like, we're talking, well, we have these, like, these four pillars, like our strategic plan and like each one, like, so like the you belong here aspect obviously goes with scholarships. But I personally am hoping that like as we move forward to our next level of our strategic plan, that we can kind of elevate the you belong here message to more than just a pillar. And in that regard, then there can be like a renewed focus on youth scholarships because I think that can be a core, that's a core element of bringing people in is like, right, removing barriers. So that's kind of long-term wishful thinking, but I think it can be a direction.
You know, one of the things, I helped raise money with the foundation for, for health and wellness. And there wasn't one donor that I contacted, and certainly the ones that I was successful in, well, they were successful in pledging their support, that didn't say, what are you doing for people that don't have the means? And I, I think that that is an Urbana thing. And I, whatever we need to do to, to lift that up, I think we need to do.
Well, sir. Yeah, we definitely would have that conversation, but.
So I don't think we're tempted to go back. I would move that we accept the twenty-twenty-five current projects report for the Urbana Parks Foundation.
That's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing that, let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 That carries an animal's body. Takes us to action to accept the twenty-twenty-five annual meeting call.
So now we have the board study sessions, regular board meetings, and the advisory committee meetings.
Should we add that? Audio models just for fun.
I like that, but I don't know about moving all the audio, video equipment.
Well.
Yeah, what, what I would really love, even if we continue meeting here, is how quickly are we going to get a middle meeting? That has to kind of resolution with the one.
This is the.
This is supposed to be.
It's supposed to be the same resolution as that one. I mean, that, the one in that meeting is a whole lot easier than this one for my old eyes.
Trying to remember, is brighter than somebody?
Yeah, but I don't know if this is, I wonder, but this is replacing the old one where we had to turn the lights off.
Oh, okay.
This is new.
Okay.
That's why we have the lights on. It's way, way better. I don't know if it's equal or better than what's over there.
It was kind of nice not to have to turn the lights down, though, there, wasn't it?
Yeah, I didn't even know it. And I can tell you.
Hopefully that's basically happily programmed of revenue generating space in the evening.
I just wanted to clarify that the joint board meeting for U P, with U P F and us is at six-thirty and not seven? That's what's on page two, which is not the same. I have no problems with that, I just want to make sure that's.
I think it says there at six-thirty.
That was intentional because that's the only thing that's not at seven.
Ah, gotcha.
I think we said it was six-thirty. Like, I think our, like, the motion we passed.
I don't, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I know we moved our study sessions and board meetings to seven, we get that before. Up that is at seven. I didn't know if that was somebody else's.
Did you mean last week at six-thirty?
No, we meant it's seven, yeah. Let's assume seven.
That's the only thing.
Because I think we've tried to get those, that might have been a carryover. Yeah, we can defer on that.
Six-thirty is fine, I just want to make sure. We have a little gear to sort of announce.
Because it would be a study session slot until that's on the clock. Is that standard?
Okay.
Okay.
So I move to accept the twenty twenty-five annual meeting calendar for regular board meetings, study sessions, joint meetings, and updat meetings. Second.
That's moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, starting with the center.
Aye.
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 And that too carries unanimously. Brings us to Roman numeral nine. There was no new business removed from the concept agenda, so move Roman numeral nine, comments from commissioners.
I would like to congratulate Keith on his retirement. It makes me a little feckled, and I also want to, you know, I want to congratulate him, but I want to say, he has done such amazing work for the Park District, and he's been here a long time. I'm just, I'm sad to see him go, very happy for his retirement, so, put that out.
Kathy, we talked about him this morning when we were walking around Meadowbrook, because he was the one that got the idea for those green metal benches and placed the way they were so they're more handicapped accessible and everything. Brilliant.
He's going to be greatly missed.
Oh, yeah.
He's going to be greatly missed, so thank you, Keith.
Yes.
I asked Keith what, if he had a, raised, I think he's most proud of, and he said,
the fact that he's, in his, you know, recent history, helped us replace every playground in the district. And if you look back where we were before we started doing that, our playgrounds are pretty quite poor, Kate, and they're not anymore, so he's very proud of that.
Huge.
That's an amazing accomplishment.
Yeah.
And every sign about how many times?
We talked about that.
Okay, there are no further comments. Do we have a motion to, to executive session for matter of personnel?
In accordance with section two, part C, exception number one, under law open meetings act, I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing an employment matter.
Second.
That's moved in second, is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, starting with the center.
Aye.
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 That carries unanimously.